Let's go ahead and start our work session from July 27, 2023. Can I have a adoption of the agenda?
I'm looking at that.
Second?
Second.
Hey, everybody, direct members, say hi.
Hi.
And we're going to go to 2.01, Dr. Buck.
So 2.01 board goals for 2023-24 school year. During our retreats with our facilitator, Mr. Ali, we were working with SMART goals was the decision. We had three general areas. And so the task for Dr. Barker and Dr. Sheldon was to work on options in for you. There's no approval tonight where you get direction. So you have several options. Basically, he was talking about with us to have narrow SMART goals are specific, measurable, obtainable, results-oriented, and time-bound. And now, one interesting piece is that his examples all had three years. They have a base year and then three years of data they're trying to get towards. They're long-range SMART goals, which is not something we've done in the past. So there's a lot we can play with here, but I'll turn it over to Dr. Barker to kind of go over the options she wrote down. That doesn't mean this is the only options. If you have something else you want to do instead, we are certainly here to serve. So, Dr. Barker?
Absolutely. So there should probably be anything that you had seen in communication from Dr. Buck with regards to the options. And again, the charge that we took was that we anticipated or understood that the general idea of the board's desire to work session were options for SMART goals in the areas of academic achievement, student behaviors, and discipline, and so these master plans. So what we did was generate multiple options of potential SMART goals, likely with the option of one being selected from each area as opposed to multiple from each areas that we can work on a target. But again, that's a little force to work through any goals that's necessary. And again, these are views of the above and beyond. What would be goals in the CSIP and dates of the CNMP? And would be specific targeted SMART goals written for the purpose of core goals. We have the color coded in terms of blue, green, and yellow in terms of those areas that we're provided. We've moved forward by suggestions for possible academic achievement goals. The first option would be to take a look at the percent of students in grades three through eight who either exceed their individually designated fall spring NWEA growth and saying that it increased 2% at each tested grade level from spring 2003 to 2004. The nature of that looks like NWEA says each individual type, like, Dr. Kenny, you should grow six grits, and Dr. Hudson, you should grow four. This measures how many need their own identified growth, and that we would see that increase. The second option that we provided was the idea of the mean achieved percentile for NWEA, so the students in aggregate, and talks about where our students in aggregate are on their achievement, not their growth, so what they actually put in terms of their grits for, and each grade level and how that compares to the national percentile with the idea of collectively moving ourselves up the percentile in comparison to the national peers. Option three would be to take a look at a percent of students in each subgroup scoring on a high average or high. That would be the equivalent of the 60th percentile or higher on the NWEA, and the idea of seeing each of those subgroups increase by 2% at the tested grade level between 2003 and 2004 in spring. So we would see growth from wherever that group started and see equal growth across the groups at least. Option four would be focused, because again, there was some conversation retreat around real-world learning and careers. So in order to ensure option four was available and SMART goal there, this is actually directly tied to our CSIP as it calls for 85% of our graduates to have marked value assets by 2024. So we could... Now, the fifth rose academic option would be to take a look at our district composite ACT score. NWEA measures through essentially grade eight as its account for high school measurement. This would be a high school, more end-of-school career look. And this relates to the district versus the state. As we know, as different forms of the ACT present, it's important that we always anchor our district score to the state or national score because those test forms may change. Difficulty is supposed to stay low, but we want to make sure that we be that anchor back to something like the state. And this essentially says that we would at least remain two composite points higher than the state. This is not much change. It's more of a request to maintain the status at that level. When we take a look specifically at student behaviors and discipline goals, again, we really tried to focus a lot on things that we would do to intervene because we understood from the board that the task was not, don't tell us what you're doing, but help with quantifiable results. And so the two that we have suggested here with regards to discipline and behavior data look like this. The first option would mean that the overall number of coded K-fold discriminating fractions would decrease from 22,680 in the spring 23 to under 22,500 in the spring of 2024. So just a general decrease of discipline infractions. Or, if we wanted to target more because we felt we cursed with the board, some concern about some of those physical and/or safety-related infractions. So we gathered those that seemed to be into that category, and that we could then ask for potentially a 5% decrease in each of those as a goal through various methods for short practice. So in terms of those two areas, those are the ones that I look for, and then I will refer to Dr. Sheldon to talk through the board's goals in the area of facilities.
And as Dr. Sheldon comes up, the idea is that we would share these, answer questions, and then you have a discussion because your goal was decided. I know there was some feedback from one board member maybe on the previous set. We have a positive goal instead of a negative goal. So decreasing this one might be considered negative. What about a positive goal that obviously decreases this one? So how you work then? So happy to hear all of those, and we begin with your survey.
Much like academic services in their area, there's a lot of direction we can go, including the area of comprehensive facility management, the long range plan. We selected these nine possible, which were SMART goals. You can see we focused on also critical areas, what we find as critical areas, one which being building capacity, communicating... The average facility work order ticket being closed within three weeks, all groups being replaced 25-year period, 100,000 square feet annually, all plumbing equipment that scored greater than 32 on the Plumbing System Condition Index. That's an index that goes on the mechanical side as well. It's an index that looks at the age of the system, how much time we're spending to repair and maintain that system, how much money we're... In general, over all, the maintenance crew gives an evaluation of what they feel the condition of plumbing and maintenance, on the mechanical aspects. One intercom and one firearm system should be replaced every year. Backflip revision devices, servicing domestic fires, and all our service water lines should be replaced over a period of 25 years of age. All learning spaces furniture will be replaced over a 15-year period of time, 235 learning spaces annually. Then all buses will be replaced over a 10-year period of time, 15 buses annually. So these are nine areas.
Critical? Are there other critical areas? Sure, we can go down that path as well, but these are just some examples that we bring forward for your consideration and discussion.
Okay, so I see Ryan is already moving. So I'll go ahead and open it up for questions. And you can, if we could, just to kind of structure the conversations and to make sure that we're capturing everything, let's start with the academics piece, and then if we can move to behavior, and then if we can go to comprehensive facilities plan. Did that kind of slow you down, Ryan?
I just have an overall thought that I'd really like to share.
Okay, so let's go and start with your overall thought.
Sorry, I have a lot of thoughts, but I'm going to narrow it down to this. There's a difference between a priority and a goal. And in this particular case, I understand where we ended up at the retreat, and then we get these particular suggestions, which I do appreciate. But I do feel like we should be writing a priority around academics within the goals being X, Y, and Z, right? Similar to the suggestions that you have provided, because then we're still giving you direction, Dr. Buck, as to some measurables that we want to attain. But at the same time, when we're promoting out to the community what our priorities are, our priorities are student achievement, increasing student achievement, right? And that's what we want to get out to members of the public, which I think is what we should be doing. And then underneath that, then we have some of these SMART goals, which I think then lend themselves much better to us evaluating, Dr. Buck. It gives him the direction that I think he wants in terms of, where do you want me to go with this priority, right? But I do have a hard time in front of the community going to them and saying, for example, one of the three things we're going to focus on is replacing HVAC units, right? Or, in some cases, with academic achievement, for example, we do NWEA, and we're only impacting grades three through eight, right? So now you have parents in the district who are just like, well, they're going to focus on grades three through eight, so who cares, right? And I do think that that could be the sentiment. And I was the one who brought up on the behavior discipline one that behavior and discipline tend to be perceived as negative. And so if you're going to word something around behavior and discipline, it needs to be, what is the positive outcome going to be, right? And so I think we need to make sure and really be mindful of that. But I just wanted to share that because I thought a lot about this over the last few days and sent the email to Dr. Buck and stuff like that, that all of these things feel like they should be housed under a priority within that particular thing. So we should have a priority of achievement. This is where our goals are going to go. Priority of discipline, where I love Dr. Buck's suggestion of participation in co-curricular activities and clubs and stuff like that. I think that's better than discipline because I think that's a hard one for us to measure. But, and then you house the goals under it. You go to the facilities master plan, we'd have priority to upkeep our facilities, make them state-of-the-art for our students. Here's some of our goals under that that we get to measure. So I just wanted to offer that, that I just, I feel like we've gotten into the operations, day-to-day operations with many of these SMART goals, and I want us to be above that and get to direct Dr. Buck, this is where we need to go.
So I will actually, and normally I wait, but I just want to kind of discounter what you said. I would absolutely agree with what you're saying. My, when we talked during our board retreat, I felt like we had priorities, but we were lacking goals. And so what I'm trying to do as a board, or trying to give leadership to us as a board, to say, what are the things that we are setting as a district that is going to challenge us and that is also supporting the notion that we're making progress? And so I don't necessarily know if we're, especially with option three on academics, I don't know if that's in the weeds with setting a goal while the goal that's here is 2% of seeing in these particular subgroups, if that's getting in the weeds to say, now, I think what's getting in the weeds is if we're starting to give direction on how are we going to move that 2%, I think we're in the weeds. I think setting a goal as a board to say, we should be seeing 2%, 3%, 5% increase in these subgroups on academics utilizing the NWEA as our tool, I don't know if that's particularly getting in the weeds. Now, do I actually support having overarching priorities as we have as a board have had in the past? I do. But am I wanting to make sure that there's goals attached to those priorities? Absolutely. And so that's why I say I can support what you're presenting, but when we left the retreat, we kind of left with the notion of we were going to have district leaders know the areas of priorities for us, and then they were going to bring back goals to us. And so I guess I'm saying that to say, I think you all have done what we asked you to do as a board. I just, but also I do support the notion of us, where I think maybe there was a miss was we don't see the priorities, we see the goals. And what our expectation when we were saying the wordsmithing or the language was we pretty much gave the themes, but we don't see the language of priorities. Is that kind of what you're saying, Ryan? And so I think that is what we're probably looking, yes, they do go hand in hand. And so when it does come to how are we holding district administration, Dr. Buck accountable, yes, as a board, we're going to look at the priorities because that's what's forward-facing to the community of these are the three areas that this particular board has seemed to be important to us and to our students. But these are the goals with benchmarks that we have presented for us so that when it does come to saying, are we making strides in these areas? This is what we're looking at. And that also is then forward-facing to the community. If that kind of makes sense, and then I'll hush up and I'll kind of open up to anyone else that may have any comments with the goals and what has been presented to us.
So we do have a CSIP that has goals in them. Not all of them are SMART written, and we're getting ready to create a new CSIP. So what I took away from the work session was wanted to have three SMART goals, and then we're going to be uber-focused on that. But our CSIP is going to have many, when I look at this list, I got a feeling a lot of these things are probably going to be in the new CSIP once it's finished, or something similar of ilk. Now, there's going to be many people creating it, so I can't guarantee these exact ones, right? So we are going to have a lot of goals in the new CSIP. So I don't know if, maybe this is the track, or do you want to look at our current CSIP and pick three things you want to be uber-focused on this year? Or, like Mr. Ali said, do you want to pick something you're focused over three or four years and keep the same focus, and there's a long-term goal that you're trying to work to, towards?
So I would agree that we do have a CSIP that has goals. I'm not sure if we have CSIPS that show benchmarks and show where we started, and then what goal are we trying to get to? I don't know if that technically is clearly spelled out within the CSIP.
Some places.
In some places. In academics, would we say that to be so if we're looking at option three? I'm just going to be honest, if I'm looking at this, option three is what I like the most because that's where our gaps are as a district.
Our CSIP does not necessarily, while it has an academic goal, there is not a specific goal that says, here was our starting point on MAP and/or NWEA, and here is our desired endpoint. There are other goals that have, for example, the one that market value asset is a very tangible goal. There is a, the approach was much more about data-driven decision-making as opposed to specifying the specific data, is my recollection as a participant on that team. I didn't facilitate that particular team.
And that's fair. Is there any other comments or thoughts from any board members just about what has been presented, about goals, shift in direction, kind of what board member Murdoch suggested? Board member Resnick?
I mean, I don't think the suggestions are off the mark that much if we look at it as if we had an overarching priority of academics and then using some of these targets as the priorities to help kind of drive the direction. So to me, I think, especially with the NWEA, except, you know, we'd have to figure out which benchmark we're going to use beyond eighth grade, I agree there. But using improvement as demonstrated by NWEA scores, the growth standards, I mean, I think that's a really appropriate way for us to see as a board and a district how our school is doing and helping our students and breaking it down. I guess when I look at this, I don't know, do we have to pick, I feel like we have to pick a couple, but I don't, I wouldn't look at it and say only number three. And if we're looking at number three, I would actually say I would prefer to see how that, if it's possible, broken down by those categories, growth versus where they are in the percentile in those groups, or both, but importantly, growth to see how those groups are progressing as compared to just by grade level. So to me, I don't know, I look at these and I think that they would be great if you just, you know, roll them up under, this is the academic priority, and then these are the benchmarks that we're looking at. So to me, I don't know, I guess I don't see an issue with at least the academic side of these. I think that, to me, they seem appropriate.
So what I'm hearing, and correct me if I'm not, and because we're just wanting to make sure we're given clear directions, that's what I want to make sure that we're doing so we can get this right. What I'm hearing from you, board member Resnick, is that we have a priority that is set that is centered around academics, which we currently do have a priority, may need to change some words to it, right? That is around academics, and then what you're saying is option one, option two, and option three all might be relevant to what those, what the goals would be that we should be hitting as a board. Am I following you?
That is what I'm saying, yes. I would say that those would be great benchmarks to use as a demonstration of whether that priority is being met. You know, 2% growth, 2% percentile increase, whatever that is, and, you know, a growth in our market value assets, those being the benchmarks as the proof or status of how the district is doing in meeting that priority of academic excellence. So that's how, when I was looking at this, that's kind of how I looked at it anyway. And then if, you know, if you use, you can say the same about, you know, student behavior, you don't have to call it that, whatever the priority might be. Improve student climate and school safety. And then how we measure that, maybe part of that becomes reflective of student discipline and behaviors. I have trouble with kind of using the numbers, decreasing those numbers as proof because I'm just always concerned about, well, are we just not going to call it that then? Is it going to just get cataloged as something less severe to demonstrate that we're improving it, but it's not, it's still happening or something like it's happening? So I don't know that that's necessarily the right metric. It's good information, and I think we should be able to see that, but I don't know if having that be the target is necessarily the right use of that tool.
I will say that there was conversation between board member Murdoch, myself, and Dr. Buck via through email. But Ryan, if you'll, board member Murdoch, if you'll kind of just share with the full board what your thoughts were on possibly some changes on that, on how we're looking at discipline. But I will tell you, part of that conversation was that we did not want to give a signal to our staff that what we're wanting you to either one, not give discipline, because discipline is warranted because we're trying to meet goals. So we didn't want to give that signal, but we also didn't want to give the signal that we're looking at numbers that ultimately, the conversation was is we want to look at discipline that ultimately is going to reflect and benefit academic success. And so what things can we look at that does entail restorative practices and things of that nature around discipline that ultimately is going to also show a picture of academic growth from our different subgroups and our student population? Board member Murdoch?
Yeah, so just for board members, I mean, I'm happy to read the paragraph that's relevant that I sent to Dr. Buck. I just said lowering the number of referrals is just a number. It doesn't necessarily mean the building climate is any better. It doesn't mean student interactions are better, and it doesn't mean mental health of students and staff is actually any better. The second choice of lowering series of fences, while better, I still think our focus is a bit off here. Our goal needs to be centered around some, our goal right now is perceived around something that is negative, poor behavior write-ups, and I think setting a goal around that would be setting a bad precedent. That's when we then had the discussion about, we don't want staff, we want, one, you want staff to feel obviously supported, and on the flip side, you want students and staff to both be accountable for actions, right? And so I think that it becomes really important that we as a board, one, that we are allowing staff to have, to make sure that they know, we still want you following those processes because we're not needing you to try to hit some arbitrary number, right? We always want to lower discipline, right? I mean, that should always be the goal. I think it'd be really amazing if we said that that wasn't the goal. So that's when then we actually kind of dovetailed off into, is the behavior of students academic and otherwise, because we know that this is, that there's correlates to this and the research supports it, that that's when we started going into, is a better metric perhaps student engagement and behavior as a priority, right? Around those levels, because we know when students are involved in their buildings that they tend to do better academically, that they tend to have better interactions with their peers, all those kinds of things. And that's kind of where the conversation kind of fell off because I just really, really struggled to the exact same point that you're saying there, right? Is I don't just want a number that's out there. And coming from a former classroom teacher, I would feel a little bit, right? Like, we're trying to reduce discipline, and so you're trying to do what your building is asking you to do, and that would be nothing against the teachers or administrators. You're trying to do exactly what you're being directed to do so that incident, that incident that normally you probably should be doing a write-up on or getting triaging to an administrator or something like that, I don't want that to all of a sudden become, I'm going to pass on that one this time, right? And so I think that we just need to be mindful of that as we go through this particular goal.
And I'm going to call on Vice President Foley, but before she starts, that could remind us even as a board, you know, the district provides data to us on extracurriculars, right? That our student population are involved in, and we know that data also supports that when students are involved in two or more extracurriculars, then obviously there's academic success that comes from that student group. And so when we look at that data, we saw that there were particular buildings that had very high numbers of student engagement. So they made changes of making sure that extracurriculars were available during the day so that for those that had transportation issues, those that had to be home, to students that had to be home to take care of younger siblings, things of that nature, well, if we set that as a goal... we set that as a goal around that behavioral kind of topic or whatever it may be, then that is now setting a goal for the entire district, which means we should be seeing movement from every school and not just certain schools. Vice President Foley.
Thank you. When we were looking at the first category, board member Eslick mentioned having multiple goals, and, and I was thinking along the same lines with goal number three, goal number four, goal number five. So can we not do the same thing with this category and kind of lump everything that we're talking about together? So we can have something that has to do with discipline, something that has to do with extracurricular activity, and then what about surveys? We're, we're sending surveys just asking about the kind of culture of safety. We could, we could capitalize on that and say, we want to see that score go up. We want to see students feel safer, staff members feel safer. And usually with surveys, that's not something that I would want to put as the primary data factor, but if you're doing like a three-pronged approach, I think that would be appropriate to say, we want to see discipline go down, but we want feelings of safety to, to go up. So, just throwing that out there.
Okay. Is there anyone else on any, on this topic? Can I propose something then? How about we put something together to send out a survey to everybody, and then when we come back for August 3rd, we have a continued work session, and you can see the data of what people, all right, it's five of you or seven of you are interested in X, but only one of you is interested in Y, and that'll help us make a decision that way. So we'll send it out as a, as a survey poll to you.
A survey of?
These and things we heard you say today.
Okay. Of priorities?
Of these SMART goals. And we'll also wordsmith the priorities, because I think we know the themes. We'll, we'll try to put some words down for you, so you can also look at those on August 3rd.
I'm just wanting to make sure I'm clearing the full board's clear, so we're not saying that we're setting up a survey or a poll out to change these themes. We are set on our themes.
That was my understanding.
Correct. And would the full board agree on that? We're set on our themes. So what you're asking for is a survey to send to the board that is going to get one information, just if you can.
So if I think of Dr. Shelton had nine things there, and if I'm hearing you want two to three survey, which, which, you know, three are the most important out of these nine to you, and then we'll see if there's consensus around that, and that way it'll give us a starting point for a conversation on August 3rd.
Within essentially putting an overarching priority over each one of these categories, for lack of a better term. Right, okay. I'm, I'm fine with that.
So I would, I could support that. What I'm, what my ask would be from the full board then, is to make sure that when we get that survey and whatever's presented, if we could, prior to the work session, if we could please make sure that whatever data or whatever, that the goals is truly providing the information that we need to be able to say if the things that Dr. Buck has given his administration to do is actually working. Are you following where I'm at? That, that, so that when it comes time for evaluation, that we are truly able to look at that information and judge if the things are working or if they're not working. Vice President Foley.
I did have one more question, actually, for both of you. Looking at all of the goals that are listed, do you feel like any of these in particular are a stretch? Because I'm, I'm looking in particular at the goals that are up there, and I, I see a lot of those seem like stuff you guys have already been kind of talking about for a while and kind of working on these plans. So even if we didn't have this meeting today, were you already going to do those things there, or is there anything that you're like, we're going to reach, we're going to try, you know?
Well, to answer your question, that, yes, we're going, we're going to do these. And the stretch is, you know, finding the resources to, to actually accomplish this, because we lean, at least on the facility side, we lean so, so much into our bonding capacity and voters approving future bond campaigns. So, you know, assuming 2025 comes and we put something in front of the voters and it's approved, all of a sudden, it's just a process of us setting up the process to achieve these goals. You know, is there an advantage of replacing 200,000 square feet of roof every year rather than 100,000 square feet of roof? Not really, because we still want to get every year out of that current roof that we have that's still good. And so this puts, these goals just put on paper what we plan to do, and then the question becomes, you know, if we find ourselves in a position where we can't financially move forward with a particular area, that would probably help us prioritize, well, that roof is a higher priority possibly than replacing those 10 buses. And so it's going to help us prioritize the work we're going to do, given, given limited resources. Now, once again, 2025 comes and we pass, hopefully, a 200, $200 million bond, all of a sudden, this, this work becomes very doable, and we're, we're coming to you with those updates.
So I would say our answer is probably slightly different on the academic side. I do absolutely believe these are stretched goals. It may seem very small when you're talking about two percent, and without getting too statistical, when we start to get into a RIT and the incremental value of a RIT and how that moves, and an N size of the number of students who are taking this assessment, moving small increments is significant movement. That being said, you know, is it always our goal to be at 100% of our kids growing at the rate? Of course, but we do think looking at historical data, Dr. Herzog, Dr. Kenny and I sat down, we looked at historical data, this is not a gimme, but, but we do think it's an achievable stretch goal.
So, hate to put you on the spot as a response, but if we say that this is a stretch, then what would we expect? Let's say if this was not brought before us as a community right now, what would be the expectation of a realistic movement with what is presented to us? Of, and specifically on option three with the two percent, where do you think we probably would be?
So it's probably best answered by looking at all of the historical data, right? And just being able to articulate, this is what the growth looked like over time. Dr. Wright gave some of that to us in October when we looked by subgroup from one year to the next of the number of kids who met their growth goals, so it's slightly different than goal five. Gosh, I almost hate to guess at this.
Don't, don't guess.
Can I get you the information?
That's what, exactly where I was about to go. My ask would be then, because I think it would help the full board, is to say, if this, none of this was asked to be brought before us as a board, what is the data showing that we're moving every year from year, and we can even probably maybe look at three years back of data, to say, this is where our movements are? And so us, let's say it was one percent is kind of where our movement is, and so the two percent is showing that we're trying to double, right? What we have actually been showing.
Can I just ask for clarity? I want to make sure I'm clear on what is that being asked? Is that for each of the NWEA goals or for one of the specific numbers?
I would say each, since they are entertaining all of them. That's what I would say. If any board members are saying anything different, kind of tell me now, please. Okay? So I would say for each.
Just on the academics, not necessarily?
Just on the academics, yes, ma'am.
I will get that to you, if not the next board update in a timely manner.
Okay. Board member Eslick, I, before I call you back, to kind of jump back on the point that I think Vice President Foley was making is, and I think, Dr. Shelton, you probably are gathering this, we want to make sure that we're challenging what we're doing as a district. We don't want to be presented as a board that we are more so just saying, this is what we was already doing, but we're truly wanting to see that we're putting in some overtime to get more things done because we're setting a higher benchmark than what's normal. We know that we are a very high-performing district in all facets of our district, right? And so I think what the challenge that we're giving, Dr. Buck, is we want to see some additional stretching. And so if there's some areas that you can provide us come August, first week of August, of where we're truly doing some stretching, and what the goals that we're bringing to us, then that would be great for the full board to see. Vice, okay? Any other comments or statements? Dr. Buck, do you feel that you kind of have what you need from us as a board?
Yes, and so tomorrow morning, we'll get together as the three, the three of us, because August 3rd is next week Thursday. So we'll, if we can get the survey out before the weekend, we will, and we'll just work to see if tomorrow if we can get that out to you.
And, Dr. Buck, feel free to reach out to myself, Vice President Foley, if there's some things that you need some clarification on, or your team needs some clarification on, because our goal as a board, and I've talked to many of us, we want to make sure we get this right, so that when it come time for us to be able to sell our story and sell the progress that we're doing as a district, that we're all on the same page. And I think setting high priorities with some goals that we can obtain, but also that is challenging us as a district to be even better, that's going to help us to sell the story. All right? If there's any other, no other comments or statements, then I'm going to say our meeting is adjourned, and we can run upstairs real quick.